It's five o'clock. At this time, I will call the work session for the Perry City Council Monday, November 6, 2017 to order. We have four. Item three, items to review and discussion, item three A of presentations, three A one is a presentation of the Perry Housing Assessment. I don't see Mr. Ford come here from the Regional Commission. That being the case, with councils concurrents, I would like to table this until we can have his presentation.
I'm with him.
Okay? Thank you. Item three A two is a presentation of the cost estimates relative to the Sandman Boulevard and General Portman Hodges Boulevard landscaping improvements. Carter and Slup here. Mr. McMurray.
Yes, Mayor Council. Claire is with Carter and Slup. She's with us today, and I'm going to put these poster boards up for you so you can see them, and she's going through a presentation.
So you're going to be round with us?
I am. I guess I...
This is Will. What can you call it? I don't know this. No. No.
Well, I guess there are part points. Is there a slide?
Yes.
So I'm here to talk about the landscaping concept plans for Sandman Boulevard and Portman Hodges Boulevard. First, I want to just kind of talk over what our tasking was.
She's over there.
I got you.
Okay. So next slide. Okay, so our tasking was to develop concepts to beautify the main corridors in downtown. And those included General Portman Hodges Boulevard and Sandman Boulevard. And we wanted to come up with a concept plan and also get concurrence from GDOT that they would allow what we wanted to do. So, next slide please. Originally, the scope was just to include Portman Hodges Boulevard. And that was, you know, recognizing that so many visitors each year come out to the fairgrounds and trying to create an inviting corridor to bring those people into downtown. What it did originally was to eliminate the parking lanes on either side of Portman Hodges, bring the curving in in different areas, create different beds for landscaping, and doing some right turn lanes. It was a much bigger concept originally, and also doing the meandering sidewalk concept that y'all have adopted other places. Well, that concept got rejected to by GDOT because of hydrology concerns. And so, we went back to the drawing board and discussed with the city leaders, and the decision was made that we were just going to focus on the medians and beautifying the medians only. So, and at that time, the decision was made to add in Sandman Boulevard work, I guess just recognizing that there would be a lot of synergy between the two and wanting to design the concept to match one another. So, that's how Sandman got added. And like I said, we decided we're going to focus just on the medians, try to develop the low maintenance concept. And also, we wanted to maintain the meandering concept by doing some rock accents, rock pathways, if you want to call them, that kind of meander through the medians. You can go, I don't actually have a couple of slides here on now, but there you go. So here are the concepts that we came up with. The one on the top is Sandman Boulevard, and it's, you can take much wider medians, more space for, the rock is more isolated, kind of then more like bio swell rain garden type concept. And then down at the bottom is Portman Hodges Boulevard. It's not as wide, and so we're going to use the rock more just as an accent there to tie the two designs together. This board, their boards at least, that kind of we're using examples of what each of the plannings that we're calling out on this concept could be. And then we have a planting list that actually has been approved by GDOT as well, you know, we've put several options on there. That's not to say you couldn't pick some other stuff if you wanted to down the line, but you have a few options that have been already approved by GDOT. Next slide please. So for Portman Hodges Boulevard, we were limited by the narrow width of the medians. The trees, we really wanted to put trees in the median, but ultimately, GDOT rejected that because it's too narrow and there wasn't enough horizontal clearance for their guidelines. So we came up with the rock pathways, low maintenance, ground cover, and trying to keep down the requirements for any mowers to get in that area since the medians are so narrow. And shrubbery, you know, water lawn grasses and irrigation certainly was also a part of the concept. Next slide, for Sandman Boulevard, because it's wider, we had a lot more flexibility. It also is kind of already shaped like a swale, so the bio swell concept worked well there with the rock. There is a lot of trees that have to be limbed seven foot from the ground to be able to see it, but they are allowed. Then the low maintenance, ground cover, shrubbery. We did have some side here just because the medians are so wide, it was hard to not have any side, but we tried to keep the side all continuous so that your mower enters and can mow all the way through a median and come out rather than mowing little patches. And then, you know, there will have to be a little bit of grading and contouring with the bio swell concept, not a lot, and then irrigation on that, that concept too. So for the estimated cost, for Portman Hodges Boulevard, we estimate the entire way from the Golden House Parkway down to Martin Luther King Jr. Drive at the Rotary, Rotary Park is $575,000. And the cost per median foot, if you take the cost and divide it by the number of footage of medians that you have, is about $180 per median foot. Sandman Boulevard, total estimated cost was $936,000, and if you do the same thing there, it's about $300 per median foot. If the center's wider, there's just a lot more cost to do that. But that gives you an idea if you want to try to break it down and do it in little pieces, kind of what you'd be looking at cost wise to do that. So just to let you know, we have, what we've done, we came up with a concept, we did a conceptual design, and we got that design approved through GDOT. The next steps that need to be completed are, you're going to need to do a full design. We'll have to get approval from any billboard owners on, that are within 500 feet of any trees you're going to plant on Sandman Boulevard. They have to agree that you can, they're not going to interfere with their billboard to plant a tree. And then we'll have to do the full design approval by GDOT and implementation of the design. So, that's kind of how things came about where we ended up. These are some 3D renderings of, this is the Sandman Boulevard, one there about two, two points on, and then this is Portman Hodges. So, that kind of gives you an idea of what we're talking about for general grades. And that's, that's the story. So, are there any questions?
Do you not consider great mortal trees?
That's a good question. I believe they do. I'll have to check to be 100% sure on that.
Well, you can. I've seen it being used on a number of things that just let them grow and don't cut them back, and they, they go into a tree form.
Right, yeah, you're right.
They're leaping out well above the seven feet or so.
That's a good question. I'll check into that for sure.
Because you can, we, maybe we can get away with that, have we moved forward, there'll be a Portman Hodges to give that breakup. I wouldn't recommend it. We cut them, we just let them grow and chew them brown, and so, they end up being a pretty nice tree.
It'll give you some height, yeah.
But you might, in check your left, check out the right, because some of the right people, I'm going to be rolling.
Okay, all right, we'll do. That's all I have. If there's no more questions, we'll just go.
Council? Any other questions?
I guess the question is, where do we go from here? It's a fairly expensive project, but somewhere in the future, we always think about how to get them done.
Two questions, where the money coming from?
I got to go back and talk to the Perry's. I don't, I don't know where you're going to come up with that, apparently that kind of money. Obviously, it has to be phased, but at least initially, it's going to have to be more than phased as just one part of the median than another part of the median. It's going to have to be phased rather than the old plant and all that type of stuff with that kind of money. Plus the deal, at least initially, the rock concept on Portman Hodges, I understand the linear and it looks good, but that strikes me, since the median's so narrow, the maintenance problem as time goes on, with the growth coming in, how you're going to, you know, technically keep that rock rather than just letting it all go. It's not the one for foot traffic anyway. No, you don't want everybody out. That's right. You want everybody out there.
Yeah, the whole concept is mainly with water over on Sandman Boulevard, keep the erosion down, plus some, you know, architectural depth to it.
How would you place that? How would you place that?
Ground up those trees, put stuff down, we can keep the grass out.
Reasonably, you do that.
Yeah, you put a parking down first, and then you do have to spray it. It's used a lot, and so, conceptually, I like it out on Sandman, but I agree with you, out on Portman Hodges, I think I would just expand the rest, or whatever plannings you have.
Ground cover.
Ground cover there rather than I would put rock in.
If you want to serve out the cost assessments to eliminate the rock on, you can certainly do that. And then these boards are, where you have to keep whatever you all want to do with them, or all, you know, if they're going to be in the line, it's a little bit.
Just the question is, where do we want to move forward? Do you want to go to a full design at this point in time, or can you get the billboard permits and get GDOT's approval, so we can move forward, or are you going to put it on hold? I mean, it's a very good question.
I would suggest. We'll take it under advisement for now.
Why he's saying, what part of that, what's in the line? What part of that gets in the meeting?
Well, I, I think probably the first major focus would be to take a look at some type of option or focus in on General Portman Hodges, because that's the first Boulevard you had talked about making the improvements on. And see what type of options exist relative, for example, follow up on the, about great mural, and just see what else can be done. Well, 600K is a lot of, a lot of money, even when you pull that rock out, it's still a lot of money. Okay? We'll take it under advisement. Minor, well, concept changes, but we should be able to care about tools and who has had a chance to steal. Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
And, I believe, Mr. Ford is here. We will go back to item three A one as a presentation of the Perry Housing Assessment under the Middle Georgia Regional Commission. Mr. Ford, you're interested?
Thank you very much, and my sincere apologies for running a couple minutes late, coming on down here, I'm making this afternoon. But very happy to be here and appreciate y'all giving me the opportunity to talk a little bit with you about the housing assessment that Regional Commission worked with the city of Perry on to complete, beginning in 2016 and then concluding here in 2017 with some additional follow-up site work on some new developments, and then on a few where we noticed errors in data collection the first time around. So just to briefly, go on to the next slide, maybe? Next slide? By way of a little bit of background, the city of Perry requested the assistance of the Middle Georgia Regional Commission to conduct an assessment of residential properties within the city. And this was done with the intention of being able to identify where there are concentrations of substandard or dilapidated housing within the city, where there were concentrations of good, well-maintained homes in the city as well, and sort of use that information that was gathered to help develop strategies and target assistance to homeowners, if need be, in the maintenance and upkeep of their properties, as well as potentially targeting code enforcement activities in that direction as well to ensure the orderly upkeep of properties throughout the city. Again, this was primarily focused on residential, actually exclusively focused on residential land uses, because those are the ones that are eligible for state funding through programs such as the community development block grant program, through funding sources like the community home investment program, whereas, you know, commercial or institutional land uses don't typically have that same variety of funding sources available, nor is there as much, you know, direct human need in those instances for alleviation of liability. So what the Regional Commission did was, in coordination with the city of Perry, next slide please, developed a methodology of basically rating and evaluating the homes on an A through F scale, either excellent, good, average, distressed, or failing. And there were a number of very, you know, sometimes common and sometimes less than common defects, issues, concerns that we potentially identified with properties as we were evaluating them. And, you know, your excellent properties are those that are extremely well maintained, don't have any visible signs of deterioration. Your good properties are typically also well maintained, maybe they need a fresh coat of paint or show a few signs of aging here or there, but are very, you know, still nice homes, structurally intact. Your average ones may need a little bit more in the way of repairs, maybe some work on the steps or the porch was one of the more common issues you might run into from time to time, maybe some minor dry rot along some of the boards. Your distressed and failing homes are the ones where you see clear need for action, either in terms of code enforcement and, you know, work on the building inspection side to make sure that they are still suitable for, you know, habitation, or in some instances, either maybe you need to demolish the structure or provide direct assistance to that homeowner in demolishing that structure, and then, you know, rehabbing it either into a completely new unit or a much improved unit from what it is previously. As we go to the next slide, you can see some of those varieties of defects, we sort of characterize them, some of them being minor, and others of them being major defects. So for example, we might have a damaged piece of siding or two as minor defects, whereas if you've got large chunks of siding on a building that's missing, that, you know, constitutes a major defect at that point. If you have a significant sag in the roof, that's something that becomes a major defect and starts causing structural concern for the building itself. And so then, if you go through the next few slides here relatively, actually, we read through these pretty quickly, you can see examples of excellent, good, average, distressed, and then obviously failing homes. So the unique aspect of this, which is going to give this data hopeful usability for the city of Perry in your continued efforts, is focused on the GIS data collection that was able to be done for these properties. And you can see that we sort of divided the whole city up into a number of grids, pretty much wherever we could find residential properties within the city. We went there and took pictures of all the houses that we could find, so in case anybody ever saw someone driving around with a, with a camera out there, out the car window, that's what we were working on in that space. And by being able to geocode all of those data points to a specific address, we were able to see, you know, concentrations of areas where you may have had additional housing issues that may need to be addressed, sort of targeting neighborhoods for potential code enforcement activities. And you can see that this is all based off of a web interface. Go to the next slide. A relatively simple web address, do you remember, and you use mgrcmaps.org/perry/housingassessment. And if you want to click on that link very briefly, if possible, it can give you the overview of what that actually looks like. You can see that it is populated with a number of points, and it, there are a lot of houses, so sometimes this data does take a little while to load, just as a point of caution when using it. But if you go to the upper right-hand corner of that page, you can see a couple of tabs there, including the one on the far top right, if you'll click on that, shows a, that one? Shows a variety of layers that you can select. So for example, if you were to uncheck the houses box there and look only at one of the condition characteristics such as excellent, you can see, you know, where those excellent homes are clustered. And, you know, particularly if you're looking for, you know, rehabilitation activities, you can look at just where the distressed and failing homes are. For example, you can see areas where you've got concentrations of those, and obviously, looking some around these neighborhoods in here on the west side of town, a few sort of around on the eastern side of town there as well. And if we do go back to the PowerPoint presentation, we'll sort of highlight a few of those areas So first, looking in the areas sort of west of downtown there, we see that there are some concentrations of these either substandard distressed homes, you might say, particularly around the Sand Hill community, and as well as on the other side of Portman Hodges Boulevard as well, near the Creekwood Park area. So those are, this is probably the largest overall concentration within the city of Perry of homes that may be considered distressed or failing. There are a number of, a couple of trailer parks around that area there as well, including one, rather a large one in, in this area that does contribute to that, with a number of those trailers being, you know, more rundown than in other parts of the city, certainly. So those are sort of your primary areas, and that's in fact the area in which, I understand, the city has been investing a lot of time and resources into those areas, so this sort of backs up and validates that decision that it is a key strategic area to focus on. If we go to the next slide, you can see a few other areas. These are going slightly on the north side of town here. Again, there are some additional trailer parks or campgrounds, or sometimes it's a little bit of a mixture of both, where you've got some RVs that are being used as permanent homes for folks, or very small trailers that are somewhat rundown, as well as some neighborhoods on that, you know, western side there again, of the downtown area that may need some assistance. And then if you go to the next slide there as well, see sort of the other main concentration there, which is along 127, if you head out of town, towards Warner Robbins, along, and the Old Hill Road is one of the longer roads that runs through that area there as well, and sort of presents another potential target area. Lastly, we did look at a couple of what we might call secondary target areas. This time around, we did the updates to the study. You'll go to the next slide, I'll show you some of those. This is actually heading out of town a little bit along Frank Satterfield Road, in sort of the, I guess, southeastern part of Perry. We did note that there were a number of homes that were more in the, you know, average category than, than good, where we might have been seeing more good or excellent in other parts of the city. So that isn't necessarily a major cause for our concern, but it's a, sort of a, you know, keep this, keep your eyes peeled on this, because there might be changes happening there over time, it might be a neighborhood. To continue making sure that code enforcement visits out there and continues to do a good job in those areas. And then if you look at the next slide as well, you see a couple more of those areas, you know, nearby, some of the areas we've already discussed, near Sand Hill there, a little on Ball Street there as well, and partially along Tucker Road. Some of the main corridors are actually looking a little bit rundown in terms of residences in those areas. You know, as a general rule, and this isn't to, you know, try to single out any particular area or any particular part of the city, it's more of an effort to, you know, help with the dedication of resources where they need to be, and help make sure that funding opportunities are available where necessary and directed in those areas. So again, this is sort of a secondary area, a little bit more of the average side rather than getting all into distressed or failing homes, but maybe an area, again, looking into the future to sort of track that. And one feature that the software, I think we're doing it with Esri, which is a, you know, worldwide GIS-based company, they have this data on their sort of cloud platform, and then we host it as well on our service, which means that it is secure, and it's going to be able to be maintained by the Regional Commission going as far into the future as you need to, and it allows you the opportunity to review this data at your leisure. You can actually go to that website that we looked at earlier, click on individual houses, see examples of the photos, and be able to maintain this going forward as a tool for continuing to look at homes, assess their value, you can take new pictures of stuff, maybe old ones, and see if there are areas where your local investment has continued to make a positive impact on the community. So if you go to the next slide, there are a few resources that I've already mentioned throughout today, and these are all things that you have been doing here in Perry, and I suspect we'll, we'll continue to be doing in terms of providing assistance to some of those homeowners who may be in need of it. So that sort of is the overview of, of the study that was done. Again, started in 16 and then had a chance to update it, go back and make some corrections here in 17, where we noticed there were some deficiencies earlier in the data collection. So we're thankful for the opportunity to do that, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take those now and try to answer them as best as I can.
Questions, council? Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
What's the idea from the housing team, or updating this data on the long line?
Um, multifaceted. The perhaps the most important aspect of maintaining data is going to be, the Regional Commission is actually going to be hosting a training for the Department of Community Development, and as we go out and CEO residential properties and that type of things, we address code enforcement issues, they'll be able to update that via their local phone. It's actually a very easy, very nice process. So that'll be the primary mechanism to which we make sure it's maintained and up to date. And also, the housing team do some of the, you know, the CDBG program, the CHIP program that we're currently working, you know, as we're completing those as well, we can go out there and make changes, and it's basically live time updating. You can see where you can layer things and find hot spots and areas that need work and so forth. It's going to be an ongoing effort, for sure, and it's going to be... It's going to be an ongoing effort, for sure, and it's going to be mostly led by the Community Development Department, but the housing team's going to definitely be a part of that.
That's a good idea. I don't want to kid about it, but just this database, and as we do walk, pray, and counsel for areas, neighborhoods, if we run upon, if we come upon something that needs our attention, we need to make sure we document that data as well.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. And from the housing industry perspective as well, you know, we're glad to have this data, as we're going through our work program and, you know, working through improved housing in the community, having this data is paramount. I mean, we can't apply for any of these grant programs or anything without this type of data. So now that we have it, and we have it citywide, you know, we can keep working hard on those, and as we're done with our revitalization area strategy in Sand Hill, as we're looking at where to go next, we can kind of utilize that data and determine where to go. So it's excellent, and, you know, thank y'all for supporting this effort, and thank the regional commission, they did an excellent job on this, and they spent a lot of time in Perry doing it, but it's great that we have it, and it's great that it's online and it's easily updatable, so we can maintain it in the future.
Fantastic. Any other questions, Council? Mr. Worthy, I do want to personally thank you and your team for helping us with this project, which is something that the city of Perry will utilize for obvious reasons for quite some time, and I appreciate the efforts that y'all have put into it, and thank you for your continued assistance in this and other ventures that we have from the regional commission, all of that vast of job.
Thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity and for having us down there.
Thank you, sir. I have three B's under administration. Three B1 is consider a specific, excuse me, a special alcoholic beverage license. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, your database is a memo from me requesting that you all consider, but the big caveat, assuming it's legal from the state's standpoint, a special alcoholic beverage license. One of the things we've noticed relative to marketing now is that there are a number of businesses that are interested in serving wine free to their customers. For example, if you go to an art gallery or a salon and that type of stuff, you may remember, we've had a couple of times that has come up, and we've had to advise a business, you can't do that unless you have an alcoholic beverage license. The state law says even if you're giving it away for free, you can't give it away for free without having a license. So wanted to bring that to your attention and see if council would be interested in pursuing setting up this special license. A couple of the conditions would be, number one, that the property where it's located would have to be zoned to allow the issuance of an alcoholic beverage license anyway. Number two is there can't be any sale of the alcoholic beverage license, any amount of trade-off or service. Manager must be able to pass a police review, alcoholic beverage license can't be taken from the business site, establishment have a current city of Perry business license, and the facility cannot serve meals or include the alcohol as a real function. What we're asking for today, if council is agreeable, is conceptually, if you think this might be interested in pursuing, then we, staff-wise, would go and check and see whether legally it can be done as far as the state is concerned. If the state says no, then we don't go any further. I think it might be advantageous for us, even if it turns out the state says no, because we have had some businesses that might be interested in that, and it shows that council is aware and interested in trying to help local businesses expand their market.
Counsel? What's your thoughts?
I think you'd be allowed to look into what Mr. Gilmore, what was something you can't do.
Okay. Do you have one else?
I'm not interested personally. I'm not quite sure what I'd do.
No, but it's a good question. We need to look at it, because we haven't worked, sort of breaking the law, and, you know, there are plenty of those, we need to tell them if they're not, and we, it needs to be on a sound legal basis, and we tell them, no, you can't, or you can't. It's happening right now, and they've asked the question, so I'll need to go and answer.
Well, to me, there's a two-part question to that, so correct me if I'm wrong, if they're breaking the law, or that's kind of strong.
No, I don't know if they are or not.
But from the department of revenue standpoint, from alcoholic side, that's not our decision. But from the city side of code enforcement, what is specifically the zoning and the licensure going to need us?
I'm just looking to say that if it's something they want to do, and it's allowed by the state, if it's permissible without them giving a full, like, license, let's make that easier for them to do rather than harder. Don't this is good?
Mr. Gilmore?
I'm all for standing on a sound and legal basis if possible.
Yes, I will go and answer.
I would advise you to call me well.
That's true. We work with Mr. Gilmore moving forward. Anything further, Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, sir.
And you? Three B2 is 704 Carroll Street. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, also in your packet is a memo from me. I think council remembers you authorized to go to bid for the stabilization project of 704 Carroll Street, also known as Sinclair Station, probably known to most folks as the Miss Peggy's, former Miss Peggy's barbecue location. You may remember, we first went out to bid, we had rejected bids because the cost was so high. We have gone back, talked to different contractors and everything, the costs have not gotten any less, in fact, they've probably gone up a little more. Most recent estimates are somewhere in the range of 150 to 200,000. The problem is that the building, while it is historic, is so far in need of stabilization that you have to do just about everything. You may remember, we were talking about just the exterior, not even any interior work or anything. For example, you can't just take the canopy off because of safety concern there, because some of the brick might fall, and all that kind of stuff. So regrettably, the administration is recommending council authorize us to go to bid to demo the building, and then replace it with a historic plaque.
I think it's going to end up costing us more once we stabilize it, because that's not doing any work, as I'm saying, for a reconstruction, it's just giving them some type of stable conditions, so if we're talking at least 300,000, and I'm not sure of the historical importance of that. I know it's representative of what was there back in the 30s and 40s and 49 came through there, so I'm not sure that we can justify $300,000.
Well, it'll make it a little harder, and it'll make it a little difficult, because we have a fact, you know, letting them know that. At the same time, this will begin for people who love to the park, and come up and look at, and play.
There was no fact, but you could find a good picture of it from earlier when it was in the position.
I don't think we can justify spending that kind of money. I mean, I like it, I remember when it used to be a vibrant place, watching Griffin have it, and I was known for Miss Peggy, and I see other things that were in that building, but I still cannot see, just to feel comfortable saying that that's something we need to go ahead with, that we have to drive, I believe.
The history teacher in those patents, but that is not signed really. That's something we can go and talk about.
Yeah. What's your consensus?
Your mind?
Your mind?
And move forward and see about the plaque, and we'll be putting commemoration of it.
A slide away?
Could I make a statement?
Yes, ma'am.
From this side or this side?
It doesn't matter, as long as I can hear it.
I appreciate, you know, your diligence and wanting to be responsible in this, moving the city's money, time, and for that. But I also want to say that what the historical society, I feel like you're making a mistake. At this point, you have only put it down in the hard gear. You know, and I know, that that's a very limited audience, and I want to make a suggestion, and I make two suggestions, actually. First of all, I'd like for you to re-advertise it using the design build approach. Let's see if there are any contractors out there that would like to take it on and manage the project, that would also give the community the opportunity for input. The second thing I'd like to suggest is that perhaps it's time that we appointed a historical preservation committee, so that we can write some grants and receive some monies that could help with projects like this. Everyone that I have tried to write, you always get down to the question, who is your historical preservation committee? Without it, you can absolutely know that you're not going to get that grant. So I am proposing to you that this committee be... So that's... You have any questions for me? Let me make one other statement, too. We have been given cemetery tours down there, but we had to stop, because there are no restrooms in that area. And when you spend a couple of hours in location, there is going to be a need. So I would like to suggest that the building be saved and repurposed into some restrooms for events that would be happening in the park, or the cemetery, or when the Veterans' Park is completed, when people visit that area. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Where you go?
We would prefer to repurpose the bathrooms, and that's almost, basically, it's going to take, tearing it down and coming back up, because it's really not built, it's elusive for that, and the structure is there. And if we were to put a project manager in charge of it, it just seems like that way to cost on top of what we're all talking about, but we've got a pretty good estimate of what, if they could stabilize it. Now, I think sometimes buildings that we have are just too far gone. Maybe we would have thought about this 20 years ago, saving that building, it might have been less expensive, but I still think we can put a fact down there, acknowledging what was there, so people can see it. I'm not sure it's a minimal part of our reconstruction of that one part.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, could this be added to a future spot?
It could, if we were to vote with this council, it would feel like anything else could.
Is it possible that city employees could do some of the demolition, prior to the resurrection?
That's the problem. The stabilization itself, based on the cost estimates that we have gotten, have determined that the building is not just not worth saving. But for example, what Gilmore said, in order to, the canopy itself is in real bad shape and needs to come down, and we can't take it down because it's currently, what literally is stabilizing the front wall of that brick. So there's not a way to keep that safe if we take the canopy off without creating another liability issue from a safety standpoint. So it's, their structural integrity of the building is very suspect at this point.
I think that, as I understand it, the building itself is divided on both sides, that actually has come apart, so you can see the split in the masonry work on both sides of it. And I'm not sure that the second floor is even ended anymore, I don't know that. I have not been brave enough to climb in there to see, but I think there's some real structural issues with it, and I think everybody knows how focused I am on preserving everything there is in Perry, but I'm not sure that that's something that we can save at this point in time, the condition it's in.
I'd like to make a suggestion to this, while I'm here, but that, I think the point's are good, and the suggestions are good, I think you have that, how can we get here in life? You know what I mean? Other words, that if you're in the city, you see something that the city going to move on, this for future reference, and that, you can come up with a suggestion or decision that we can look at and we can discuss it, and that, you know, and you might have changed the thing.
Could I answer then? It has been my understanding for almost two years, that this project was going to be a problem, and the historical society was going to have a part in this. As a matter of fact, we were going to, you know, we were going to have some kind of display on the inside. So this is the first time that an absolute no, tear it down, there's no other way, has come to my attention, so I'm here, speaking to that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Might I suggest, council, that we take, the comments that have been made tonight under advisement, and that we address this in the pre-council meeting at 5:00 tomorrow, and get a consensus of moving forward for council at all times. Fair enough?
Thank you. Thank you. I have three Bs. Three. Amend the animal retention policy to reduce the city time to seven calendar days. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, in your packet is a copy of the current animal retention policy. You may remember, we just recently amended that. There is a request from the Perry Police Department that instead of the current 10 calendar days, that the animal is, the cities, that that be reduced to seven calendar days, which is what it was previously. The administration has no issues with that.
Counsel?
I'm just going to, as well, especially considering, trying to move. I'm driven, they're running, nothing noticed.
Mr. Gilmore, do we need to put this on the agenda for vote?
Yes. It'll be on a residential event tomorrow.
Anything further?
That's it.
I have three Cs, and economic development department, three C's, one is to review interstate signage. Mr. Smith?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor and Council, this is continuing with the wayfinding project that has been on the go for some time now, I understand. We had the design folks in town a couple of weeks ago, and we're trying to finalize sign locations, finalize the messages on those signs, all that type of thing. It was quite a process. We were driving around the community, and we thought something that might have been left out of the plan was actual interstate signage. This is not something we really see a lot, but we thought it might be a good thing to include while they're doing the plan, as something that would announce your arrival in Perry, if you will, as you're traveling either south or north. You could have this interstate signage to let people know that you're in Perry, and it'd be very attractive, and all that type of thing, and present Perry in good light to the travelers up and down 75. So what I wanted to get with y'all on tonight were some of the prospective designs for this type of signage. As you will recall, you approved the signage package, the design package, this past summer in regards to wayfinding signage at this point in time, and I wanted to make sure this thing hit you by surprise when you see the final product, and that you get your input here in regards to the direction you might want to take. So what you have before you are five preliminary designs. You may recognize some, like for instance, I know this, like this one here, but there are a couple other ones in here, and just looking through them, if you have any input, if there's anything that you would like to see and you might not want to see, please let me know, and we're working towards finalizing this thing, we'll get that included.
Does cost could be an issue?
Yes, sir.
But what are the differences in those signs, the size of them, and I'm sure of the cost of them?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if we're lucky enough to pick one, or it's...
Cost is always an issue. In regards to these types of signs, they have not provided a cost estimate, but we wanted to go ahead, we want to have the most comprehensive wayfinding system possible. We want to have the most comprehensive wayfinding system possible. And any sort of sign that y'all may want to see in the future or whatever, we want to make sure that's included while they're working for us and doing this work. So I, you know, I look at these signs and I envision something that's probably not a top priority. As the final package is put together, they'll have all these cost estimates and everything in there. Hopefully, they'll have all the information that y'all need to make your decision moving forward in regards to how you might phase this thing in. What are the top priority signs might be, how much you can spin it in given fiscal year, that type of thing. So that will come, Mr. Hunt, but I just wanted to... That's kind of the next step. And that's part of the final deliverable to get to us.
Counselor?
I think it's safe to assume they're expensive.
Yeah.
Everything is expensive. So, you know, I guess.
I think... I like this group, but take the two people out.
The people won't be there, but... All right, so we have one vote for...
That doesn't have... Bend it, it's going to require maintenance and water and all that.
Sure. Only one I like, I'll be honest, is the last one. You know, the very last option.
That's the one Mr. Hunt just said he likes as well. So two votes for the final option?
I like the first one. Yeah, that one's fine.
Okay.
Well, the DOT let you do it.
We've had extensive conversations regarding that and yes, feasibly, yes. Obviously, it would have to be approved by GDOT, but under FHA regulations, it seems that this would be allowable. So, you know, we're working on the assumption that yes, but obviously they have to work with GDOT on that.
I don't believe it.
I have a couple of long-winded engineering type answers on that, and I can get that to you. And after overlooking those, it does seem that...
I'd be flattered as the DOT would allow a brick thing like this in its right-of-way on an interstate. Absolutely flattered. You take a look at all their other signs, everything they have in the right-of-way, they're all the breakaway holes. So I can't see where they would allow that.
It's kind of regarding the distance that it's off the interstate. And from what we can tell on the regulations, the distances that are shown in there should be within that threshold of allowable.
Forty-seven feet or so?
Thirty. Then 30 feet is a minimum.
Thirty-seven.
Yeah, so they're outside the 30 feet, I guess is what I'm getting at there.
I think it would be a nice touch.
Sure.
But we need to get that answered before we spend a whole lot of money on that.
Well, design's included. So I'm just trying to get those things for a bug of this package, you know, any type of sign I want to see, but I'll definitely get some clarification on that and get it back to you. Any more questions?
If there is a sign in Cordill at exit highway 300, that lake and south, and it's right there on the interstate.
Hilted for the invite?
No, it's brick. It's in the middle of the... Between the interstate and the exit ramp. It's in the...
What can be done?
In the interior quadrant, when you're going off on 300 there, it's in that interior quadrant. It's not like it's vision here right on the side of the road. Right?
It's about the same. I'm not sure how far it is between the interstate and the exit ramp, but it's pretty much right to the center.
I remember seeing that, I don't remember what the distance is. Counselor before?
Who can lose ball? I want to know how much you don't call.
We got my board if I don't have a cost. Get all the information like you suggested, even from GDOT, you know, give me the information.
But also suggest I think about what design it is that you want.
That's right, we have to come up with that completely.
You need the design tonight, Mr. Smith?
No, sir. Like I said, this isn't a top priority. I just wanted to get it in front of you. But it does seem there is a preference for the final design, so we can go ahead and get that to the firm if it's acceptable.
Anything further? Item three D, Community Development Department. Three D one is a proposal for engineering services relative to the pump station improvements. Mr. McMurray?
Thank you, Mayor, council. In this packet, you'll have a memo from Georgia Work and Environmental Services. This is... This has been requested. In fact, it started back from the pump station study, Constantine completed, where we identified some pump stations that were in need of repair. That is one portion of this letter you see. The other portion is talking about generators that need to be added to some pump stations. So if you're getting more of the... Give me the list of pump stations that we're considering putting generators in. Those are listed in this packet you have. And also, we are discussing some data for two pump stations. If you remember, ESG recommended that Highway 41, your pump station was in dire need of some maintenance due to age or corrosion and hydrogen sulfide and the condition of that pump station. It was rated a top priority from ESG and after consulting with Bert and city staff, we agreed it is definitely in need of repair. Also, you have a generator, Valley Drive, Wood Eagle, Wind River. There was another generator listed for Bear Branch. However, that was a second top priority for the... From the Constantine pump station study. So the thought process is, is that this pump station will need to be upgraded in the near future. At the same time, we try to incorporate that generator at that time in saving money on the project bidding. Just some of the thought process we've had with the staff. These generators, of course, the recently experience with the Irma hurricane and the necessity of having generators or some type of backup pump at these pump stations are very much needed. So overall, you'll see the purpose there, the task, the engineering services, and the total fees, which is expensive, for engineering survey, engineer bid, and construction administration This is not including the, of course, the labor installation and construction costs of this project. So after your view of that, you have any questions for me or Bert, that he's also here tonight?
Counselor?
Let's see if we can talk to Jones.
No, sir. This is design. And there's a lot of design with generator design because it's electrical design engineering to work the pump station. There's also a lot of money involved in designing the new pump station, which will remove the Smith &amp; Loveless pump station, which sits on top of the wet well and receives hydrogen sulfide to a submersible pump station, which is underwater and does not receive the hydrogen sulfide, so you get a longer life expectancy out of your pump station. So it's kind of... But there's a lot of engineering design time and hours to go into that. And if Bert needs to comment on that.
How long before we need to do that?
Yesterday?
Yesterday. But that is what definitely need to be done.
That's right.
How would you fund it?
It would come out of its cost flow.
Not the cost flow.
Or 18, when we do a bid. But this would come out of its cost flow.
So the funding is better than that sooner.
Yes.
But we need them in all four professions, though. This is not... But this isn't something we're going to phase, but we need to have these men.
And that station has to be replaced. We have no question about that.
Well, this is one of those things in my mind, we almost don't have a choice. And that's not something you just turn off and do it and forth.
But we still got more people coming in, they're building more shit, more long with it every day.
We answer what they do.
I think, you know, everything we did with the experience of this is corrected.
You want to go? We have a comment? Counselor? All right. Mr. Murray, want to add anything to it?
Yes, just to go on top of what Mr. McMurray had already said, Mayor, council. A lot goes into this type of effort. A lot of funding work was already done with ESG and Mr. McMurray. Some of these sites are a little bit smaller than adding the telemetry tower, adding the generators, there may be some other unknowns. And so I would like to mention that even though this fee is higher than what we anticipate, it is based on how early it is not lump sum. Therefore, if we do not need it, we do not build for it. So there is a little bit in there for some unknowns that we may encounter, but early in the process, working with Mr. McMurray and ESG, we plan to eliminate those unknowns and be able to get a successful project. Thank you.
Got to move forward. Is this something we need to bug on? The concurrence from council is to move forward. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Murray. Get them on. Is there anything further we need to look at under item three for items for review discussion?
Yes, sir.
Item four is another business of the supplemental agenda. Item three is the discussion of the derelict vehicle ordinance. Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, you recall that you've given first reading to revisions to the derelict vehicle ordinance. Mr. Holbert and my staff were able to sit down and review that earlier this week, and we have requested that Mr. Holbert includes some more specifics on the actual procedures. And so those are in items C and... Or excuse me, E and F, which just give us a little bit more specifics in how we enforce and who's responsible at what point.
I don't think... I don't think y'all have any large recent revise.
Let me go over that again. So what has been included is the specifics that once we have identified derelict vehicle, we will post that vehicle itself with a notice saying that they have 15 days to remove or rectify the violation. And that notice has to indicate that at the end of that 15 days, the vehicle will be removed by the city or the city's representative. Simultaneously with that posting of the vehicle itself, we will be sending a letter to the registered owner of the vehicle, giving the same notice. So it would be a posting on the vehicle itself and a letter sent to the owner. At the end of that 15-day period, if the vehicle has not been removed or violation corrected, then the city will contact a wrecker service, which will likely use the same service that this park uses and use that rotation. We will contact them to remove the vehicle. And at that point, we will also send a notice again to the vehicle owner indicating which wrecker service towed the vehicle and contact information for that vehicle owner to work with the wrecker service to retrieve the city's item. So we'll have... We'll do the notice upfront, give them 15 days. At the end of the 15 days, we'll contact the wrecker service to remove it and give the applicant or the vehicle owner contact information for the wrecker service. At that point, we will be out of the... Out of the... So...
How will we be out of the... Somebody's got that car.
The wrecker service has the car and...
They don't want it.
That's going to be up to them to decide what they want to do with it.
We're going to get a wrecker service that will take it away with no permanent disposition of where it's going, because you can't just pull a car off and park it somewhere in a junkyard. You got to take the battery out of it, you got to take the antifreeze out of it, all these rooms that the state has now.
That's going to be up to the wrecker service.
If I was wrecker side, I wouldn't do it. I wouldn't move it.
It's still up to the wrecker service.
If you can't get one, move it.
Let's leave when we get to that point. Yeah.
You've got the car, it's too late, so let's do something now before... Let's plan on that ahead of time.
There are wrecker services that will take vehicles and...
Well, let's ask one of them. Chief knows ones we're using, that's all of them that we're using.
We believe this is the best process for us. We're certainly willing to take a look, you know, get into this, see how it works and come... If we didn't come back and make modifications, we're certainly going to do that. The other thing that we discussed that we wanted to point out and add if you have any comments to add, wanted to just make sure council understands that this ordinance deals with derelict vehicles that are visible from the public right-of-way. It does not deal with vehicles that you can see only from private parks. So just wanted to point that out and make sure that you all understood that. Anyway, this revised ordinance will be on the agenda tomorrow night for September 3. I'll be having the answer to the questions.
Mr. General, can you ask Ms. Warren to make sure that the most current version of this is attached first thing in the morning so that we will have it reviewed before tomorrow night's meeting?
I think it is. It was in the...
Back some man.
Yeah, where it's...
Yes.
See, I was going to say.
I'm a vapor guy. I ought to ask the chief his opinion on the wrecker services that doesn't have the needs, or...
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hunt, this is not a particular thing that we deal with often. My understanding is there is a simple process, when a wrecker service has a vehicle in their possession, where they can file and eventually becomes their property, and then they can dispose of it, they can scrap it for salvage or sell it for value or part it out. And so there is a financial benefit to them from doing that. I don't know all the ins and outs, but I do know that that does exist in the state law.
You wouldn't have time to find that out before tomorrow night, would you?
Mr. Hunt, it's not our problem.
Well, we pulled all that information.
What we're tasked with is passing an ordinance that allows for a third party to come pick a vehicle up.
I understand that. I'm all in favor of that. I just want to know what's the...
But pass that. It's not our problem. We'll contract with whomever will agree to do that.
I understand that, but if you can't get anybody to agree to do it...
Well, we'll cross that bridge if we get to it. The first thing we have to do is get this ordinance pursuant to state law on our books, and then if this situation comes up, we have a way to deal with it. And like Mr. Wood said a moment ago, if this process needs to be modified at some point in the future, then he'll bring it back to us and we'll address it at that time. Mr. Wood, is there anything else? No, sir. Mr. Holbert?
No.
Counselor? Anything further on that?
I have a question, Mr. Gillmore. I know that the city's stock resolution is on our agenda for tomorrow night. Is there any reason, need to discuss that tonight? Do you remember if council had any questions about that? And the only reason I bring it up is because I had sent in information to the local elected delegation that it would be discussed tonight. And I wanted to make... They're not here, so I'm assuming they don't have any issues with it. Because I had made that, I wanted to make sure it got into the minutes, that at least it was addressed. Y'all have anything y'all want to talk about tonight, or you want to go ahead and go in?
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything else under other business of the supplemental agenda we need to address at this time? There are none. Item five are council member items. Mr. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Walker?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Just about off the boundary or certain of the community victims, family victims in church in Texas. in Texas. True tragedy and sobering reminder that that can happen anywhere, and that we shall all be thankful that life is precious and living every moment.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brown Price? Mr. King? Mr. Hunt?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Gilmore?
No, sir.
And Mr. Holbert?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item six, for the corporate head items. From the Department of Finance Administration, Mr. King?
Um, Mayor, Council, I don't have anything in particular, but I did ask Mr. Baker if he would be available to answer any questions that you all might have had, and just to uprise to all of the computer issues that we've been having. So if you all have any available, I'd be here to ask some questions. I do know that there were several, we had about five, six units that were down completely, and I think the last one, which was yours, was being replaced today. And so everyone else is back up and, and running, but...
Mr. Baker? Would you like to address us about the computer issues?
Well, just a brief, as, as you know, we, we had a virus outbreak in the city, and as part of containing that, trying to contain that, it was to a point that we did have some issues in the city where we're down for a period of time. So at this point, we're back up. Mostly, we didn't have any data loss, we had a little bit of data loss in some individual units, so we're, we've already started a process with outside of the city hall, because it only happened within city hall, rest of the city did not seem to be affected, so that is, we are working with, with a software company that does our security and virus protection directly, and are continuing to monitor it, because we still continue to see some minor activity, and they are working with us closely, and they're engineers, to make sure that we're getting what we need to have, so. Do you have any other questions?
Nothing other than a comment, you and I discussed this before. I had a friend of mine who lives in somewhere in Stockbridge, he asked why I'm sending him an invoice for payments and do not, do not open that attachment. I didn't, even though he brought me the email the next time I saw it. But there's been a rash of, I don't know what you call it, spooks or ghosting of emails. It appears that, that my mayor email account has been used to send people invoices, and there's a virus in the attachment.
So those, as a matter of information, those are identified as phishing emails and/or spoofed emails, so, so what happens is the entities that gather that information can do that either internally, or they can do that externally. All they have to do is monitor your periodsga.gov site, or the Chamber site, or any site, for example. They can actually, because emails generally are open text emails, they can gather data from that by just targeting, targeting that. So by seeing a certain type of activity between users, they'll take that information and send out phishers and spooks trying to get people to buy it. And so, as you said, if you, anyone, and that's outside, even outside the city, we try to talk about this at Rotary, and it quite as noted plugs is that if you're in doubt with an email, you should throw it out. I mean, just, you just always throw it out. And so be careful to look at who it's from, if you, if you just, if you question it at all, look at who it's from. Normally, the name may say Mike Baker, but behind it, it's going to look like, just hover over it, you'll see something different, so. If you're in doubt, throw it out and call the person that may have sent it, say, did you send an email? So just, just be careful of those, those can cause a great bill, great deal of part of it.
Thank you. I told my friend, I said, if you really want to give me some money, I'll take it. I'll write you a hand invoice if that's what it is.
This has been happening with clients outside the city area for us, so it's not...
I've got another email account.
It's not just, in this community, it's happening everywhere, so we see it throughout the clients who are outside of the city area, so don't feel like it's just here, so just be careful of those.
Thank you, Mr. Baker, I appreciate y'all's efforts.
Thank you.
Anything else? From the Police Department, Chief Lynn?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Thank you. From the Department of Community Development, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council, a couple of things to prize you on. A couple of events in the past couple of weeks that you're aware of, the first being the cleanup in Ubo a couple of weeks ago. It was another excellent cleanup event, we had about twenty-four people come, cleaned up the neighborhood, talked to the homeowners, found some interesting stuff, including a cache of about thirty-five shopping carts from Walmart and Kroger. But again, it was, it was a, it was crazy, it was crazy. But again, it was a great day, we cleaned up a lot of trash in the neighborhood, and I did, they're all very appreciative of that, had a barbecue lunch afterwards. So we look forward to this going on in the spring. And then the tailgate event, that didn't happen. Very disappointed in that, you know, the forecast looking up for that day was bad, there's going to be a significant public safety issue, we had a bunch of folks in a field watching football, and then also probably would have destroyed the park if all those cars were in there, rain, and the people trying to get out, and stuck in all that type of thing. So, we hate it, you know, it's one of those things, depending on the weather, and we'll look at doing it again in the future, because there was tremendous community support behind that event. I really think it was drawing people from all over the middle of Georgia. So it's those types of unique events and things that we hope to hold more often. And two things, too, that you're aware of, the city has submitted an application for rules unsatis. Your, Paul Missedman came and spoke to y'all at the last work session about this, it gives us the state maximum job test credits downtown for a period of years. Application was submitted last week, Missedman did an excellent job on that, we look forward to hearing my favorite word, "work." And the brown bill application also was submitted this past week, and we, you know, look forward to hopefully getting it funded a third time around, but I'll keep you posted on both those as news comes in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. From the Department of Community Development, Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing tonight, except I do want to say that my computer was one of the ones that was hit and lost, so, and it really kind of teed me off, so that you know. Had it, had it been worse, and I lost the entire rewrite of the Perry Land Development Ordinance, I would have probably just not come back to work. But anyway, just so you know, but that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. First of all, but just what you... I know Miss O'Leary wasn't real happy either, I spoke to her right after that.
Yeah.
She said, I'm going on vacation anyway. Please make sure she comes back, tell her it's fixed, on whatever we need to do. But thank you, sir.
Sure.
From the Department of Fire and Emergency Services, Chief Parker?
Yes, Mayor and Council, thank you. I just want to give you a quick update, the new rescue truck that we have has ran right at ninety-five calls to date, so it's taken a big load off our other apparatus. And as a recent graduate of the recent Perry Leadership Institute program, I'm happy to announce that our own Miss Ellen Palmer did win the Larry Walker Leadership Award in that class, so I'm going to give her a big hand over that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McMurray, do you have anything for us?
No, sir.
And the award winner, community relations, Miss Palmer, anything?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Well, thank you very much. Surprise, anything for us?
Thank you.
Oh, I forgot about you didn't. Pretty good. Everybody? Our next meeting will be tomorrow night at five o'clock upstairs for a free council meeting. At six o'clock, we'll have the regularly scheduled council meeting. All of our meetings are open to the public until now. At this time, I will entertain a motion, we go over executive session for the purpose of riddle play.
I'll move.
Motion, is there a second? Motion, a second, any discussion here and then all of the, click, raise your hand. Motion, here you have it.